Good evening. The October 21st, 2021 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be held by, led by District One Councilman Tim Carpenter. Please rise.
Please rise. Please remove your hats. Let us pray together. Almighty God, we give you thanks for the beauty of this day. We give you thanks for the beauty of our city. We give you thanks for the quality of lives that we enjoy in this special city that we call home. May we also be mindful tonight of those who are ill and suffering. May we lift those up to you just for your strength and peace and for healing. May our work tonight glorify you. May we grow in love and respect for one another. Again, thank you for the so many blessings you bestowed upon us, and all of God's people said, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Tonight, we have a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Day. I'm going to read the proclamation from here, then I'll meet Ms. Sherri Waite up here at the front to present her the proclamation. Sherri is the Director of Community Engagement. Whereas, the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 21st, 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in the city of Longview, and the impact of domestic violence directly affects individuals here in this community and society as a whole, cutting across all economic, racial, and societal barriers. The Women's Center of East Texas is focused on ending violence by providing safe haven, crisis intervention, and comprehensive support services to victims. Survivors of domestic violence themselves are at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. So I therefore, Mayor Matt, but the authority vested me by Mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim October 21st, 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in Longview. Ms. Sherri, please meet me up front. Come on, Sherri.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hold him breath, hold him breath. Okay, here's my question. You know, it's sad that we have to have a day proclaiming domestic violence awareness, but we do. And it's also a blessing that we have you all to help those victims that need help, because someone has to pick up those pieces, and y'all do that on a daily basis. And people don't recognize it, and they don't understand it until they're in it. And those that are in it, you make an impact on their lives that is forever. So thank you for what you all do. Keep up the great work. You do a great service for the city of Longview and for those involved, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you, Sherri. Tonight, in employee recognition, I'm going to recognize Stefan Jones. Stefan, I'll call you up in just a second. Okay, let me read this, and we'll meet up here at the front again, okay? Trying to decrease the amount of person interaction we have to make, you know, so we'll make it work. Stefan Jones joined the water purification team in June of 2019 after maintaining and operating an industrial wastewater pretreatment system for about 23 years. He holds a bachelor's degree from UT Tyler in economics and also has some experience with hazardous material training. During the week of the winter storm in February, Stefan was a vital part of ensuring that the city of Longview's water quality and quantity continued to remain top-notch. He continued to go above and beyond throughout that week by putting personal limitations aside and doing what had to be done to provide the city with water and minimal disruptions. Stefan invests his heart, as much as his knowledge and abilities, into his work and is always searching for opportunities to improve himself and his team. Stefan was awarded to Texas Water Utilities Association Outstanding New Professional Award for his exceptional efforts, not only during the winter storm, but also since the beginning of his tenure with the city of Longview. This award recognizes those in the water and wastewater industry of Texas who have demonstrated a sincere interest far above that which would normally be expected in the protection of public health and our environment. Stefan, please come forward. Stefan, thank you. You know, the winter storm was horrible for us all, but it was more horrible for those who didn't have water, which was not city of Longview. We had water, and we maintained water, and you made sure of that. You and your team did an amazing job, as we said, above and beyond what anyone could have asked or expected. Your knowledge and experience, your expertise, all those are important, but your heart is what's the most important. Your heart is there to do what it took to get Longview water at all times. And we, man, you don't know how much the citizens of Longview appreciate that. They don't, it's good they put a face behind the water, because without you and your team, we wouldn't have had what we had. And so we appreciate you. Thank you for what you do. You do it tirelessly. You do it without any expectations of gratitude, but this is us to say thank you for a great job. Well done. Keep up the good work, my friend.
Boy, thank you so much for the recognition today.
Thank you, my friend. Thank you. I don't have any, I don't have a community recognition tonight, except I'm going to make one little personal side note. I want to recognize Eddie Williams tonight. Eddie and I, and Nona, we all graduated high school together. Eddie had his 43rd anniversary at Peters Chevrolet on September 29th. He went to work for Peters on September 29th, 1978, after graduating high school, and has been there ever since. It's the only job he has ever had. And so I just wanted to let Eddie know that I appreciate him and the work he does. If you ever go to Peters and you need service, Eddie is your man. He is the greatest guy in the world. So Eddie, congratulations. Job well done. Keep up the good work, buddy. Just wanted to mention that, because he's a, he's a special, special guy in Longview. We are now to citizen comment. I have no speaker cards at this time. We'll move to public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. McPhee, good evening. I'd like to start out tonight by thanking our citizens that participated in our National Night Out. We had another great event. We had 72 registered parties with an estimated attendance of over 3,000 of our citizens that participated. So I wanted to, again, reach out and thank everybody that come out and participated. It was a great day. The other city departments, partners in prevention, community services, the fire department, thank you all for participating and helping to make this event a success year after year. Still trying to work our numbers back up post-COVID, so next year, we're hoping to have a bigger and better event than we did this year. So thank you to everybody that came out and participated again. So last week, we graduated our third Basic Peace Officer Academy. If you remember, back in the midst of the pandemic, I come to council and ask for approval to stand up our, our own academy. That's been working very successful. We graduated 12 from this academy. These are our five recruits here that graduated. Casey Nieto, Destiny Jays, Justin Gage, Jaren Reiner, and Robert McGee. So I want to congratulate them. Like I said, we had 12 cadets that graduated. We had cadets in there from the Longview Police Department, the Tyler Police Department, Athens Police Department, Smith County Constables had an officer, a cadet in there as well. So congratulations to them, and all of them passed their state T cole exam prior to the graduation ceremony. So over the last several months, we've had several retirements within the department. This past summer, towards the end of summer, we were able to have a promotional process within the department to promote some sergeants and some lieutenants. We did that Monday. We promoted two officers to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Luke Altman and Officer Dusty Sate is sergeant, Dusty Sate. So want to congratulate them on their promotions. They've both been assigned to midnight patrol where they'll be, where they'll be working. We were able to move two sergeants up to the rank lieutenant. We moved up, promoted Sergeant Ryan Rocket to lieutenant, and Sergeant Kendrick Montgomery to lieutenant as well. And they're both now assigned over a patrol shift in patrol. So again, want to congratulate them. We had a great ceremony, good attendance, and had an opportunity to have some upward advancement within the department, and want to congratulate them. The last thing that I have is, we're getting into the holiday season. I'd like to remind everybody about our Blue Santa program. We're getting ready to kick that off. We're asking anybody that would like to donate, a monetary donation, to go to longviewtexas.gov/Bluesanta. This is a great program that allows us to gwell and help families in need at Christmas time and during the Christmas holidays. So again, that's longviewtexas.gov/Bluesanta. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Job well done, National Night Out. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Matt, members of council. Mr. McPhee, thanks for the opportunity to give you an update of some happenings in the fire, fire department since our last council meeting. First, I'd like to congratulate two of our Seashift Battalion Chiefs, Chief John Eric Johnson and Chief Josh Tanner, for their successful completion of the Texas Fire Chiefs Academy. This is part of our ongoing process to grow and mentor our employees to take on more responsibility within the ranks of our organization, and these two men have certainly stepped up to complete the challenges that are posed by that particular academy, and I congratulate them for it. Next, I'd like to thank the mayor for, and this one kind of fell in between council meetings, but I want to back up a little bit. We actually did a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week, October 3rd through the 9th. Fire Prevention Week is designated as a certain, as a certain week in October. Really and truthfully, the activities go on pretty much the entire month of October. October, we get involved in as many places as we can, in schools, and teaching that public safety message about how to be safe from fire. This year's theme from the National, the National Association of Fire Protection is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. The main message there is to teach your family members to learn the difference between the sounds that the smoke detector might make and the carbon monoxide detector might make. It's also a good opportunity for you to check your detectors, to make sure they're functional, make sure they're battery-operated, they're working. With time change coming up in a couple of weeks, that's a great time to change those batteries out and make sure that your, your house is protected in the event that you have either one of those two types of emergencies, whether it be a fire or a carbon monoxide issue. So thanks, Mayor, for helping us out by declaring that proclamation. National Night Out, I'll just echo what Chief Bishop said. It's always a great time to get out in the community and, and just meet and greet the people that are out there in a non-emergency setting. We're so used to running into people on a bad day. It's nice to have a reason just to go out and sit down and visit with folks ahead of that, or, you know, talk about ways that we can keep those things from happening, as I just did. So it's a great time, good, good, good community relations, a lot of good food. Our guys never walk away hungry from that, and it's just so much fun. All of our crews really have a great time. You know, this started out as more of a law enforcement thing, and we're certainly happy as the fire department to get on board with that, again, because we're all out there essentially doing the same mission of keeping our community safe. And being able to talk and visit with people when it's not that bad day is so much fun for us. Our COVID mission continues. We are now in the midst of taking on vaccine or booster shot missions here in the northeast Texas area. We participate with the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System, which is in the process of vaccinating nursing home residents. And you can imagine that's a pretty extensive population here, not just in our area, but across the state. So all around Texas, Tifmus Resources are being deployed out to go into these facilities and make sure that we can take proactive measures to keep these residents safe from this pandemic that we're still in the midst of. While things may be slowing down here locally, hopefully by us getting out in front of it like this, it will make those next peaks not quite so bad. That's our end goal. So just this week, we vaccinated patients or occupants in one nursing home here in Longview, and we went over to Smith County to take care of one that is in the White House area. And it's worthy for me to mention, as I do every year, that our EMS subscription program is now open for either new applicants or renewal applicants. You should have already gotten something in the mail if you were a previous, a previous applicant of this program. So we encourage people to take advantage of that service that we offer here in the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Steelman? Good job as well on National Night Out, Chief. Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now to consent agenda. Please note, item R has been removed from consideration. Are there any other items that council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
Q.
Excuse me, sir?
Q.
Q, okay. Anything else?
I just want to say something about, and, and we don't have to pull it off or anything.
Yes, sir.
To have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, I just want to say again, thank you to all the people who have worked so hard to get the stoplight out on George Ritchie and McCann. That, there was a bad accident out there yesterday or the day before. It's very much needed, and I appreciate all your hard work getting that, that done. Hopefully, we can push it through pretty quickly and get it up in the next week or two.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pearl, item Q?
Q. Can, can you explain that a little bit to me?
I sure can. Yeah, that's, it's a FEMA grant. We ran through the Texas Water Development Board to raise that house two foot. It's really just a pass-through grant. The city's not raising that. It's a FEMA thing, but they've got to go through that, and it's got to go to the city. And then, and then the homeowners there, they actually worked with, they did a RFP process, and the homeowners were involved in that and reviewed that, and then made that award, so.
Okay. Is it, is it on peer and beam?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the difference between this one and the one at the end of Fourth Street that we had to demo?
Right. Yep.
All right.
This one can be raised, and they want to, they want to try to do that, and FEMA was willing to do it, so.
Thank you.
Very good. I'd just like to make a mention on S. We have our new slate of lead co-board members to be appointed, and I just want to take a moment to just thank Peggy Vaughn, who rotated off the board. Peggy was a wildly instrumental board member for the last six years on lead co-board and had a lot of great interaction and opportunity and brought a lot of knowledge and skill to that board, and I want to thank her for her service to that board, and I look forward to the new board coming on. So with that, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now to zoning. We'll have a public hearing to consider Z 21-15. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Matt, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a rezone from general retail to one-family SF6 zoning district for approximately 9.71 acres of lots 3A, 4, and 5, Block 112, L Woolley Track subdivision located at 2201 Judson Road. The applicant would like to further subdivide the tracks and build single-family homes. SF6 is a new zoning category that was created as part of the UDC process. This zoning district does allow for smaller lots with smaller setbacks without having to go through the plan development process. This district is similar to something you would see like patio homes. This portion of Judson Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway, which this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi?
Do they have the streets? I'm wondering about the roads, the planning?
Ma'am, ma'am, come to, come to the podium if you would.
Yeah.
Please take your name and address and, and address your concerns. Yes, ma'am.
Marion Hasty. I'm wondering if the road plans to go through Choctaw, because we have some property on Choctaw.
Sorry, I'm trying to get to the map. Richard, can you, Richard, can you get to that map for me?
I can.
Thank you. Yes, so that road is planning to go to, let me get to it right here, through, yes, through to Choctaw, I believe? Let me take a look at my map real quick. Yes, to Choctaw. And you're on Chickasaw? You're on Choctaw, okay.
The concern is?
Yes, ma'am.
Rental property of high density and crime, and what plans are there not to invite that into the community? You have a high-density area, which we don't have, which, well, we do have a high, it is a high-density plan, and it is rental. And so that's just the question. The possibility of increased, you know, crime in that area. And it's mostly elderly people that live in that, those side streets.
Yes, ma'am. So it, it is a denser development. Now, you know, crime, unfortunately, you know, I mean, this could be a rental property. The applicant is planning to do this as a rental property. However, they are individually owned lots. He can sell each lot individually. You know, he has planned to have entrances on Judson as well as Choctaw. However, if council wishes, he, council can make a stipulation that that second access onto Choctaw be for emergency access only.
Ms. Choi, the, the property to the east of this is still zone commercial, correct?
Yes, sir. The property to the east is still zone general retail.
Which is, which fronts Judson Road, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
That's where they were going to build the big medical complex at some point a few years ago, is that right?
That's the property to the north.
To the north, a little north of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Angela, those are city streets?
Yes, sir. They are all public streets.
Built to our specs?
Yes, sir. They will be.
And Angela, have we not required other developers that go over 30 lots to have dual entrance?
So any subdivision with over 30 lots is required secondary emergency access. Any development over 60 lots are required two points of public access. So second, so secondary emergency access could be gated with a Knox box. That meets the fire department's requirements.
That's what I understood was going to happen.
I don't want it be accessible, except through emergency uses for the services of the fire department or the police department. So I don't want an open street right there, because that neighborhood is, like she said, it's, it's an older neighborhood. There's older residences in there, and, and they don't need 50 cars running up and down there every day. And you said that if we only had 59 or less?
That is correct.
Less than 60, that one entrance would be fine.
Yes, as long as they have secondary emergency access. That's correct.
And that was my understanding when P and Z passed it, and that was why I was okay with it.
They did not pass it with that stipulation. However, you can make that recommendation with the stipulation.
I would like that recommendation made, because I-
Is the developer here by chance? Who is the developer?
Brian, uh, Mr. Conaway.
Mr. Conaway, I'm not sure if he's here or not.
Okay. Any more discussion from Ms. Choi on this?
Mayor, I have one other. This is a Chief Steelman question. Is that setup adequate as long as you've got a Knox box from the backside and access from Judson Road for y'all to protect 60 units?
So from a-
That are real close, that are real close together?
And, sorry, Chief Steelman, but we did run this through our fire planes examiner. He did look at this, and this layout is okay with the gate and the Knox box.
That's how I want it to read, if I can. I would like to make that recommendation to council.
We, we will, we will address this Q separately then. We will now, is there a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda without, we've already done that. No, so Q, Q can be, if you want to make a motion? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you want to make a motion on this to amend this, this zoning request, then you can do that, Steve, as a separate motion, and it has to be seconded and voted on. But I have to close the public hearing first. Is there anything else in the public hearing? I'd like to ask Ms. Choi or anyone involved in this, in this zoning issue.
We're going to vote on this as is presented.
Well, Mr. Pearl's going to make a motion that we can vote on, either it'll get a second or it won't get a second.
Okay.
And then we vote yes or no if he gets a second. But first, I have to close the public hearing, but I got to make sure nobody else has anything else to say about this. Ma'am, are you, are you done? Speak now, whoever holds your peace.
My husband said, he's looked at this. He said, there is a way they can have two accesses off of Judson Road. You don't have to go through Choctaw now.
So Judson Road is a texted roadway, and so they do have some minimum spacing requirements, so they're not going to be allowed two driveways onto Judson Road.
No way. They won't get two curb cuts there.
Yeah.
No way. Okay, so I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept it with the amendment made that Choctaw, I guess it's Choctaw?
Yes, sir.
That Choctaw be sectioned off with a gate and a Knox box for emergency personnel only.
There's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Y'all want to go back to consent agenda again? Holy moly. Okay, we're now to zoning number B. Public hearing held to consider Z 2021-16. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone Lot 16, Block 3 of an unrecorded subdivision known as Ruthland Terrace from Neighborhood Services zoning district to Town Home zoning district. Located west of Gilmer Road on the south side of Jimmy Drive, the applicant would like to build a townhome on the lot. Jimmy Road, Jimmy Drive is classified as a local road. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses and provides a good transitional to the commercial zoning district. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi on this, on this zoning request? Mr. Wright.
Ms. Choi, on either side, are those houses on either side?
There is houses to the west, but to the east, it is, I believe it's a laundromat or dry cleaning service. And then to the south, there is residential.
So is that a good addition to those, to that neighborhood, to put a townhome in with houses?
From, from a zoning standpoint, it provides a good transition. It's currently, if I go back to the zoning map, you can see where all the blue is SF, and the property currently that's requesting the rezone is actually zoned in Neighborhood Services, which is a commercial-type district. And so townhome provides a good transition from single-family to townhome, which is a little higher in density, but then to that commercial district that's located along Gilmer Road.
Have you had anybody make any comments to you about that?
No, sir. We've not received a single call.
Okay.
Any other questions of Ms. Choi? Any comments? This public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider S 21-11. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for one-family dwellings in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There is currently a few one-family dwelling units located on this block to the east and to the west of this property. The applicant would like to develop one-family dwellings on these vacant lots. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So it says it is heavy commercial?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're switching it.
So we're not changing the zoning. We're just allowing for a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling. So the zoning will stay the same. So if it were to ever redevelop and somebody wanted to take all that property and develop it as commercial, they could. But it also, the specific use permit is to allow for a residential unit.
So those other lots that are adjacent to it, if they were to be developed, they still have to come before the council in order to have those?
Yes, sir, for, for single-family.
Really?
Yes.
They could do it as commercial, and the guy with the single-family home is just stuck next to commercial. That's the, that's the downside of-
Sure.
-of doing that. But it's the, that's the upside of progress, you know?
I understand. I move-
Is the applicant here tonight? The applicant is here today.
Are these homes similar to the ones that are being put up by Ameritex? Are you a part of that?
No.
Any other questions of Ms. Choi?
I'd like to move to approve.
Let me, let me close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Thank you.
We're now to action items. Consider resolution authorizing the directing city manager, as does need to enter agreement with Hub International and Summit Financial Corporation to perform an actuarial study of the Longview Firefighters Relief Fund for an amount not to see $45,000. Mr. McPhee.
Mayor, city council. As you know, the city of Longview and the fire pension board have been taking incremental actions to improve the sta- actions to improve the standing of the fund for some time. However, despite those actions, the unfunded liabilities have continued to grow. Additionally, the Texas Pension Review Board has requested that all plans be on track to be fully funded by 2055. Based upon the amount of unfunded liabilities, the plan will not be fully funded without significant reinvestment. With that in mind, it is prudent to obtain a second opinion from an independent actuarial firm to analyze the fund. Once that secondary actuarial study is complete, options can be developed, which could be used to meet that 30-year fully funded plan. After interviewing two prospective firms, has recommended that Summit Financial Corporation and Division of Hub International be engaged to perform the study. I know that Mr. Bonds has provided some additional information to you. I do know that Colby Beckham, Captain Colby Beckham, Chairman of the Longview Firefighters' Relief and Retirement Fund is here as well. And if you have anything to add or if you have questions to him.
Any questions to Mr. McPhee or anyone, Mr. Beckham, on this item? Mr. Wright.
Mr. McPhee, I know that, well, some people watching this who, who maybe have watched this over the last 10 or 15 years would look at it in our budget and say, boy, that's really jumped up dramatically since 10 years ago or something. And I know at one point there was an accounting change we had to make to show the actual amount of debt versus what we had to show 10 years or whatever, however many years ago that was prior to that. Do you have any insight into that or what was done or how much difference it would make in what we see?
So there are some rules and guidelines that I know Colby Beckham is way more familiar with those things, but I, I do know that there have been changes. In 2012, there were a series of eight steps that, four steps that the city was going to make and four steps that the firefighters were going to make. And that was on the advice of the actuarial firm. Then somebody please correct me if I'm wrong. But we were going to make those incrementally and things were going to get better. In 2018, we had a drastic drop that affected the returns on some of the investments. We thought it would straighten out in 2019. Thought that was an anomaly and it still continued to grow a little bit in 2020, although not quite the jump. So I think we were on track to, or making steps that we thought were going to bridge that liability.
But I think there were some accounting rule changes too that, I didn't know if you knew anything about that.
That's awesome, Chris. I wouldn't mind the next comment. Just, I've been on the pension board as liaison for eight years now and so that's correct. There are some assumptions that have changed in not our favor that make the numbers increase. But steadily, since I have been serving as the liaison with these fine individuals in the back here, we have worked from both sides, from the firefighter side and the city side, to make significant increases to better the fund. And I would say that we have been aware of and striving to address that issue for as long as I have been around, for those eight years. It is something that we've worked very, very hard at and some of those assumptions have made the finish line further away and that's part of what we're addressing. But I do want to, just for council's perspective, remind us that the firefighter's pension is something that the city is legally obligated to assist with. So when we look at the options, it's not, you know, what are they going to do about the fund? It is what is the city going to do to make sure that it's fully funded for the firefighter's retirement, obviously because we want to provide for them, but also because state law stepped in about 10 years ago, I think, and said that we are legally obligated to do so. So I think it very prudent. The actuarial study that we've been operating under has been at the hire of the fire pension board. I think it prudent from the city side that we have an independent actuary look at it and provide that feedback to city council because it is an issue that we need to all study up on and understand where we're at and where we need to go, but that we have our own independent study that looks at that.
And unfortunately, you know, we did this in 2012 when Jay was the mayor, David was the city manager, and that actuarial gave us eight steps that they thought would bring us back to where we need to be. And we did those.
Every single one.
The city did our four.
Every single one.
Firefighters did their four, but unfortunately, things happen. COVID, stock market, elections, all those things that affected the stock market that have just killed our, our fund that we have and we don't have control over that. But we did what was, what we were instructed to do, but unfortunately it didn't work. And, and we may go through this study and find out what we're supposed to do and that might not work either, but we have to at least give it a try. You know, here's the thing, just so you all know, historically, in 2003, the Texas legislature called an election to amend the constitution, which prevented benefits in public retirement systems from being reduced or impaired. If fund balances were insufficient to pay benefits, costs will be the responsibility of the political subdivision where the fund was established. Okay? This item passed in November of 2003 on a statewide election. But the amendment allowed a political subdivision to hold an election in May of 2004 to opt out of this requirement. What that means is a political subdivision, meaning each community was given the opportunity to call an election and opt out of that state requirement. Okay? Back in 2004. I was on the council then. Murray Moore was the mayor and we elected not to do that. We did not call an election for one reason, because we didn't want to walk away from our public servant, public safety servants and leave them stranded. And I wouldn't do it again today because they put their lives on the line for us every single day and it's our obligation to take care of them. So yes, it's been a burden, but you know what? It's not near the burden that they carry every day to protect us. So I wouldn't have done it then and I wouldn't do it now because I think it's our obligation and it's our responsibility to take care of them. It's been, it's been a terrible investment, but you know what? That's what sometimes investments do. We can't control the stock market, but we're not going to walk away from our public servants that, that serve us every day and ask nothing of us. So, you know, we have to suck it up. You know, back in 2015, the unfunded liability was 46 million, which is a big number. In 2018, it jumped to 62 million in, in three years. Then it went to 68 million in 2019 and this, and now it's currently at 70. This is the least jump we've had from 19 to 20. Things are leveling out a little bit. Maybe, maybe things are getting better and our, you know, our liabilities are here and our assets are here, but we've got to get those where they come together. They have to meet and that's when we become funded. And so that's what our job is to do as a council and that's why we're going to hire someone to, if we approve this, to give us direction on how to make this thing right. We've got 30 years to get it right, but we've got, what, three years to get it in place. By 2025, we have to have something in place showing that we're on the right path. So that's where we are. And, you know, I wish we could snap our fingers and, and make this go away, but we can't. But we sure can't pretend it's not there, but we sure can't turn our backs on people either because they, they, it's like yanking something from someone that's already paid their debt and we're not going to do that. So we will do what we need to do and we'll make it work and we'll be a council that will stand up and, you know, make the hard decisions sometimes. That's what we have to do. But this is no one's fault. This is no one's, we can't control investments. We can't control stock markets. We can just hope for the best. So that's what we're going to be doing. So any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Kristen, who is the Fireman's Fund's actuarial?
I'm going to defer that to Colby.
Foster?
Foster and Foster.
Foster and Foster.
My name is Colby Beckham. I'm the chairman of the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund. Foster and Foster in Fort Myers, Florida is our actuarial firm.
And they've had it for?
Probably nine years they were an actuarial firm.
So what do we know to accomplish by hiring another actuarial firm if we already know what's going on with this one?
I think it's get a different perspective, maybe get a different opinion, maybe get a different direction because as we say, the one that was supposed to get us out in 2012 didn't. We've done everything we were supposed to do. We did our four steps, the firemen did their four steps and it didn't bring us out where we need to be. Once again.
Was that Foster?
Yes. They've been, yeah, this is 2012.
Recommend the four and four was Foster?
They, they engaged. That's actually when we brought them on and moved away from our past actuarial firm is to come up with, there were a much larger firm that deals with pension funds all across the state or the nation. And we felt they had a broader aspect of ideas and changes that could be made. And it wasn't just the ideas to shed a little light on it that have changed, but we use things like mortality tables to predict. And when new mortality tables come out and say people are living five years longer than what we expected them for, those things obviously changed the outcome of what we had predicted originally.
But Foster and Foster was, Dr. Beck, was the group that came back with the four and four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this just to get another perspective, get another, maybe another opinion. When you have-
What, what happens, Doc, if they come back and they're the same? Do we change at that point? Do you, is that a discussion we're going to have, Rod? I'll tell you what happened. I got a, there, there's three things involved in this. There's three sides to this. There's the city side. There's the opponent's side. And then there's a third side that I, I went with that I have a lot, a lot of confidence in, that I visited with for an hour to an hour and a half on this situation. I learned a lot that I would have never learned from visiting with the city, other than maybe Angela back there. And that third side, I put through four years I am in with somebody else in this room. And I got a lot of questions to ask and those questions that he proposed to me changed my mind because I, I think some of us up here in the past have been against, you know, keeping, throwing money out there for consulting firms, consulting firms, because this, this will put me over a half a million dollars in consulting firms since I've been on the council and it's kind of like, hmm, you know? But he, he, he gave me a lot of things to look at and he changed my mind. And depending on how it comes back, we are going to have a lot of questions and I will still defer to that versus anybody else in this room because that's his business too. And he is on the outside looking in and he has no, no dog in the fight on this. So it, it gives me an idea to look at. And in some, a lot of questions, I've got two pages of questions here that I want to ask when we come back with this. He changed my mind to go ahead and, and, and accept the $45,000 even though at first I'm going, wait a minute. It had nothing to do with city staff making that up. It had nothing to do with the opponents making it up. It was that one other entity that I talked to. So that's, that's why I will support doing this, but then the question's going to really come back and start. We, I've been there. We owe everything we have to those two men sitting over there. Without those two departments in this city, this city would be nothing. We would not get the investments we got. We would not have the people moving here, nothing. So everything that starts with, starts with those two departments taking care of us. And I've been there. I've, I've rolled in that ambulance before. I can tell you, you know, what I can remember of it, you know, I was very well taken care of. So no amount of money at that point is worth anything that you, that you can't spend when you've got a loved one or somebody that you know riding in one of those things. So, you know, there's, there's three sides to this to me. And that middle side, that, that third one is the one that I, that I have a lot of confidence in that, that, that changed me to, to want to look at doing it this way. I still hate to spend the $45,000 and if it comes back the same as the other, then we go into another ballgame, so.
Thank you, Steve. I think just to, I do want to comment on what you just said. I think the goal is not to get a different study that says we're okay. I think the goal is to get a different study to say, here's the things we need to do. Right.
We're not okay.
Well, I, I've understood that to be your point.
Me and you have known that since we've been on the council and it keeps getting worse and worse and worse.
So we've been taking steps.
So we're kicking the, we keep kicking the, the pail or the bucket down the street.
I disagree with that.
And, well, we have.
No, we have made, the city has contributed a whole lot more.
If it had not been for the state mandating dates.
Oh, that's not true. We've been working on it for several years, but at this point, we do need a new plan. And so I, I understood that too, what you're saying.
I argue with you all day long on that, but-
Yes.
The way I look at it, from the documents I saw on the state website and the things I read, we're getting into another gear right now. So it's, it's not worth arguing with you over, but I will support it, Doc.
Well, everybody has to make their own vote, but it's not a, it's not a, we're going to, we're going to vote on it in a minute. But the point being is we, we are not kicking the can down the road. We've done the, our, our, our last step of our four didn't end until 2019. That's when our fourth step ended where we, we made our final contribution and now we're in basically 2020 is what we're talking about, even though we're in 21, it always reverts back. So once our last step was completed and their last step was completed and we realized we're not getting any better, then we have to make a new plan. And that's what we've been working on for how many months we've been working on this to come to this point. So we are, we are trying to find a solution and we don't want the same plan that we have. We want someone to give us a, we're hiring someone to give us a different opinion, not the same opinion we've already got. We've already got that one and they, they're very, very aware of that. So we're going to get a different opinion on how we might resurrect this, this pension fund. So that's, that's the goal of this exercise and so we need to vote on it and see if we want to move forward. So is there any other discussion?
One for Colby, if I might. When was the last time Foster and Foster reported to your board?
Foster and Foster provides a yearly actuarial study to the pension fund and that study was delivered, I believe, in the June meeting of this year, sir.
June of this year, okay. Thank you, Dr.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Consider approval of an ordinance permitting FY 2021, 2022 by allocating $926,000 from general fund to direct purchase of a new fire engine. Chief Steelman.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. I'm here tonight at the recommendation of the city's budgeting team to ask you to consider altering this year's fiscal budget. If you remember when we presented and we're building the budget throughout that entire process, all those several months, we had put in there to consider a lease purchase of a fire apparatus. And this is part of our ongoing fleet replacement schedule that we have that is different from the fleet fund that is administered by Public Works. In that recommendation, and you guys approved it with your adoption of the budget, was a lease purchase. What has happened since the budget has been adopted is we have received a reimbursement amount of money of 1.2 million dollars from the Texas ambulance supplemental payment program. This was something that we didn't necessarily anticipate and the recommendation of the budget team is to use that, those funds to do the outright purchase of this fire engine instead of committing to a lease, which will in the end save us some, some expenditures for having to pay the interest rates on the lease, whether it be five years or seven years. So that's what we're here to ask you to consider tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any question for Chief Steelman on this issue?
Move for approval.
Go ahead, David.
Are there other ways that those funds could be spent? Is that just put into the general fund or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Generally, it goes to the general fund, so whatever we use out of that to buy the engine, the, the surplus will go to the general fund.
Okay, so it's not tied to an ambulance or something like that?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll consider a resolution allowing the fire department to purchase said fire engine. Chief?
So following up, this, this resolution, if you approve it, will allow us to enter into a contract that will allow for the initial build of this fire apparatus, which will take approximately eleven to thirteen months. And this is the current engine three that's housed at Station Three at MLK and Birdsong. What will happen, this truck is at the end of its frontline service life. It will get about another five years' worth of use as a, as a good reserve engine, and the new engine will go into service in its place, and at the back end of that, we'll be getting rid of a twenty-year-old fire apparatus that becomes maintenance, a maintenance issue eventually, is what we've learned from experience.
Any question, Chief Stillman, on this? If not, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Sitting ordinance allowing city manager to negotiate necessary documents with Krista's Good Shepherd to purchase a right-ofway. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. A number of months ago, Krista's Good Shepherd approached the city during their master planning process when they were looking at their North Park and Institute for Healthy Living campus. That discussion was to discuss how to gain access to Fourth Street for the rear of their Middleport and rear of their campus. During that discussion, city staff expressed a desire to preserve a corridor for a future construction of a major collector extension that was identified on the city's master thoroughfare plan and our regional thoroughfare plan that was, that was labeled as a proposed Spring Hill expansion. Go to that and show you a picture of that. So this is, the red line on the map is just a representative of the corridor that, that we're talking about from Fourth Street just north of the development there that would come back over north of the parking lot and the pond there, and then they would have access to tie into the North Park campus. Through this process, Krista's is willing to construct a portion of the proposed extension as a local two-lane city street in order to gain that access to Fourth Street as to not have to wait for future construction of the Spring Hill Road as identified on the plan. They're willing to designate the full designated corridor, which is an approximately eighty-foot-wide corridor. Typically, a two-lane road is going to be a fifty-to-sixty-foot-wide corridor, and they're, they're willing to dedicate that in fee simple for a total price not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. They're also requesting fee wa, fee waivers for the building and development fees associated with the proposed development and expansion of the Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Institute with anticipated completion in twenty-two, as well as the North Park expansion that will, is anticipated to add approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet and is expected to be completed in 2023. As I mentioned, this is a project that has been identified on various thoroughfare plans. It was something that the city studied back in 2006 for a, for a east-west corridor to allow connection from Spring Hill all the way over to 259. And here is an exhibit showing that initial study corridor. Staff feels like this is a great opportunity to partner with Good Shepherd to get a new city street and also preserve that corridor for that future expansion at which time funds would be set aside for that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question, Mr. Shirley, on this item?
Does that street go through the park?
No, this is, so what's on this map, the original layout was to tile the way into 259 that would have gone north of the, the fields there. What we're proposing is from Fourth Street over. Since the time of this study that was done in 2006, Fourth Street has occurred. So the, the signal and the investment that we've made in Fourth Street can act as that. There might be an opportunity in the future to have another connection over to 259, depending on how that development occurs.
So are we going to pay for this right-ofway or the five hundred thousand dollars you're talking about?
Yes, so Krista's Good Shepherd already owned fifty acres that the institute is located on. They had to purchase from the developer of the Fourth Street extension that piece to get them over to Fourth Street, so they have significantly more than five hundred thousand dollars invested in land. So this is just the city's participation in that, that we've agreed to.
But they're going to build a street.
Yeah, they're, we're
They're building the street.
We're participating in right-ofway and, and the street, but it's, it's not a, a true tip for tat.
Their, their street construction cost is over a million dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's
Yeah.
like 1.6.
Is it a private street?
No.
No, it'll be a public city two-lane road.
Okay, and it won't cost us a dime?
Just the right-ofway.
Yeah, the five hundred thousand and then some fee waivers.
But we'd had, if we'd done this anyway, we'd have to pay the right-ofway and do the street if we had gone all the way from Fourth Street to Spring Hill, so we're saving the cost of the street
And, and they're giving us the, the full right-ofway for a
Would have cost way more than that.
major collector too, so it's not, it's the right-ofway for that future expansion as well. And we're getting a city street now that will have utilities and a sidewalk.
Next question. Utilities are there or will be there?
No, it's part of what they're going to be installing, water sewer, storm sewer, and sidewalks.
And it's like anything else. When you start, you know, this, this Spring Hill all the way over to Fourth Street has been in the works for a long time, but it's like anything else. When you finally start something, then maybe we'll get going on, continuing that project all the way through now because this is a great, great way to kick that thing off.
So that's going to be a two-lane road?
Correct. There, you know, when they
Eventually, it will be a four, it's, we see it as being a four-lane or five-lane.
Correct. On, on a master thoroughfare plan, it's designated as a, a four-lane major collector. They don't need a four-lane major collector. They really only need a driveway. But we're going to get a city street out of it.
So is, is it in the UDC, are we going to make them put sidewalks and everything there?
Correct. They'll be putting a sidewalk in as part of that, water sewer, storm sewer, sidewalk, street lighting, so.
So they're wanting to develop the backside of the institute or the backside of the?
The North Park.
So this will give them Fourth Street access. Where Good Shepherd Way is, they will tie into that and extend it up to the Spring Hill extension, and then where the end of that extension is, they will kind of tie over and get access to the North Park campus.
But they still won't have a go, way to go from North Park Campus to, to Airline?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Shirley? Is there a motion?
I mean, motion.
Is there a second? We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Now, as a community interest, Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mayor. The special thanks to Chief Bishop and Chief Stillman. Believe it or not, I was able to make all but one of my National Night Out parties. We had over a hundred and fifty participants in the Birdy Park National Night Out, and we had the fire trucks and the police cars, and the kids seemed to, to really love that. Just a really, a great night trying to get it all figured out. There was a, thanks to the city staff and the folks for another successful art walk. I will have to admit that it was substantially better temperature this time around than the previous one. A good time was, happy, thanks again to Keep Longview Beautiful for their invitation to celebrate their, their continued progress in our city. And again, the food pantry at Gregton went off today with service of about two hundred and sixty families. The thing is really continuing to grow, and, and I'm just really happy. And that's it, sir.
Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to just acknowledge this is breast cancer awareness month, so let's please be mindful and prayerful for those, our loved ones and families that are going through.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
I don't have anything tonight other than to acknowledge National Night Out was a lot of fun. I was able to make it to a lot of them in District Three. There were a few I didn't make it to. But I want to thank everyone that came out. Chief Bishop, Chief Stillman, thank you guys, and all of the people who hosted parties. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pertle?
I have concrete on Fairmont.
The other day, I got, I, I went over there and I didn't realize I had to turn off.
Yeah.
I got so lost, I couldn't get back. I ended up on, on Highway Eighty before I knew where I was.
I know.
Like, where was I going? Oh, my gosh.
They, they started pouring this morning, and they poured probably two hundred feet, four hundred feet, something like that.
That's awesome.
I called the superintendent and said, ma'am, you got concrete in front of your school, and he's, he was happy.
That's good. Mr. McPhee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just a few reminders. Note that we have only one meeting in November, which will be held on November eleventh. Christmas Parade, it's almost time for the annual downtown Longview Ambus Christmas Parade on December second. Register online now to be included in the parade. The deadline to enter is November twelfth. Register at visitlongviewtexas.com/Christmasparade. Also, we will try to, if things go the way we're going, we'll try to have normal council arrangements at our next meeting unless we have another spike. Our COVID numbers are doing better. We are coming down, but it doesn't mean it's going away, so continue to be diligent in doing what you should do and helping others and being ever mindful of those around you. So I appreciate everyone's attendance, appreciate your comments and concerns. Thank you for watching and being here, so until next time, we are adjourned.